Hey, welcome everyone. So we are coming live from the Fox Center. And we are going to start with our wonderful CCHS students who I think are all on Zoom today. Now, we might be working through some audio, Harry.
Can you guys hear me now?
Now we can. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, so a couple of things. On Friday, Spectrum Club organized a walkout to help raise awareness for the Trans Day of Visibility. There's a picture of it down there at the bottom, and it was a really great turnout, and it was just cool to see the school community kind of getting together and getting around the issue like that.
Also, over the weekend, including on Friday, the CCHS Performing Arts, we went to MICA, and all four of the ensembles earned gold medals, which is the highest honor. So that was really exciting. Yeah.
There have been activities for Earth Week at school. There's the Green Team's mini fairs during lunch, the ocean conservation theme in the Learning Commons, and the lecture on endangered animal species. I actually haven't seen that.
Yeah, it was like Mrs. Guy needed last week in the library. So that was really cool. And then a couple of other things. So games have obviously begun last week for spring sports. We have a track meet tomorrow, which is exciting. And then also tomorrow, the MVP Club is hosting activities to raise awareness for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So there's going to be a table in the cafeteria to help educate people who might come up, stuff like.
And I guess I'll do the other performing arts update. We are, actually, today was the last day of the second round of interviews for the new chorus director at CC since Ms. Smith is retiring. And we, I was actually on that committee, on the hiring committee. So that was really exciting. There were a lot of really great candidates, and I think we're choosing someone at the end of this week. So that is very exciting.
And of course, the end of quarter three happened last week, I think, and, you know, break is next week. So I think everybody's pretty excited for that.
Yeah.
Definitely. I'm definitely ready for break. So sports is underway, which we love. And there's a concert this weekend. Is that right? There's a MICA concert. Is that this weekend?
I think MICA, MICA was last weekend.
But I think they're having another concert this weekend.
Oh, right. Sorry. Oh, yeah, that is the concert band is having their, because they got the gold medal. So they're doing the gold medal showcase this weekend. The other ensembles, like, I'm in select, and we can't do it just because, like, most people can't make it. But Concert Band is doing that this weekend. I think it's 4:00 PM at Groton Hill Center.
Yeah, which I think is outside. It's an outdoor venue.
It's an extraordinary event. It's worth going for two reasons now. One, to hear musicians. Two, because it's probably the nicest venue anywhere in the weather.
It's gonna be great. Good luck on that. Good luck on track. Harry track is tomorrow. I think Unified Track Thursday. So lots of things going on. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Great. So that brings us to public comment. So as usual, we'll start with public comment in the room, and then we will go to public comment on Zoom. So if you're on Zoom, you can use the Raise Game feature if you would like to speak. Okay, I don't see anyone in the room. So we'll go online. And would anyone online like to speak for public comment? No public comment tonight. We're going to jump around on the agenda a little bit because we're waiting for Millie to come for a presentation. So we are going down to, unfortunately, our Boston students are in sports right now. I cannot make our meeting. This meeting, just as a reminder, was rescheduled for March. So we're in between sports seasons in March, and now we're not. So we wish them luck in their sports. I think there's a game today at practice, so that's great. And we'll go down to the reading of the minutes. So we have two sets of minutes. We have from February 28th, we have the minutes from that meeting, and then from March 8th, that vote will just be conference school committees, conference school committees. I won't do that vote. So I would say with a motion to approve the minutes from February 28th.
So moved.
A second. Second. Okay, any discussion? All right. Great. All in favor?
All right.
And I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 8th. So moved. Oh, you can second. Sorry. Second. All right. All in favor. We're just clipping along here tonight. So watch for correspondence. I will start with the region. We had one item of correspondence to the region. It was about safety concerns at the high school in regards to the lack of cell service. And that has definitely been on our minds all year. We are continuing to meet with Verizon about potential cell phone tower on the high school campus, but we're also looking into other ways. And so we'll just keep you posted. See how we can maybe improve communication out of those devices. And it's a. They have no correspondence to conquer public. Perfect. And moving on to our quarterly budget update. So you should have received this on your agenda, 100 level and 1,000 level reports. And I am going to turn this over to Mr. Fabry.
So there's two sets of reports, the 1,000 level, 100 level, 100 levels, a little bit more details, and 1,000 level. And those groupings are standard department of elementary, secondary head groupings, the ones that you've seen in our budget process. And what I've done is, in the 1,000 level, I've highlighted where we stand. And if you scroll down, these are the numbers, and then down below, I put some notes on significant items to make you aware. So what we're looking at here is the region. Typically, instructional leadership pulled back our technology purchases. And. We hold back our technology purchases at the end of the year. So we have, most of our tech spending will happen in Q4. That's 457,000. So that will significantly drive down that balance. In the other areas, transportation and athletics, it's not necessarily all encumbered. Some of those expenses are as incurred. So there's a balance there, but that will be spent as purchase of fuel or pay more drivers for athletic trips. The fixed charges is a very large balance. We have a $550,000 OPEC contribution in the region that we will be making as we budget it. So that hasn't happened yet. That's actually a wire transfer. It's not encumbered, but that will be spent shortly. And the benefits are deducted paid through payroll. So that's another three months of benefit costs that spend down the, so we'll essentially spend down all of the fixed charges budget line. Which is a balance right now of 988,000. Fixed assets includes, we shared, I believe, in February, our plan for vehicles. And I will spend those down with additional two diesel buses and a maintenance vehicle that we need replaced that's, I believe, 13 years old. The added district tuitions currently are slightly over budget. We will, to the extent we realize savings in other lines, will offset that so that we can carry over our full circuit breaker. So overall, we're in pretty good shape in the region. The homeless transportation costs are not yet encumbered. That will be an additional piece, but we split those costs across the two districts. A little bit less than we initially anticipated. It's also just a short time period for the remaining months. It's not full year costs. So we will incur those as well. That'll show up in the other school services line.
The 3,000 level is where that's going?
Yeah. So that's, at a high level, the region, the 100 level, I just put in a couple of comments on items that had negative balances and just kind of explained why. Which if you have questions, let me know. But I did at the bottom kind of explain what those were.
So like, in that 3,000 level where we're going to have the transportation cost for the new student. So obviously, like, we didn't budget for it, and it will eventually be reimbursed. So like, what does that? I'm not a finances, but what does that look like? So, you know, obviously, the budget of whatever it is, 2.8 million, doesn't include those costs. But we have to spend them.
Right.
So then, but they potentially won't be reimbursed for 18 months. So do you like, rock, like, how does that all work so that we can
So for the.
understand and make sense of that and continue to communicate it?
As of now, for this fiscal year, we're not sure that it's going to be solved for this fiscal year or not. I know there's legislation that looks at the timeline of the reimbursement, so we're not waiting for it.
Yeah.
What our hope is, is that the reimbursement comes in the same year that you pay the expenses, so we can apply it directly to it.
That would be before July 1st, then?
For FY '24, that's our hope. And my bigger concern is '24 will not be full year expenses. For '23, if we can't apply it, we will, but I don't know the word. That's going to happen this year.
Yeah. So then, like, does it look wonky when, like, you've spent it in one year, but it's going to get reimbursed to the next year?
Well.
I don't know. I'm just, this is more like for my education than anything.
It's sort of circuit breaker-like, except there isn't quite the same structure as already established.
That's what I'm like, so.
It's probably not a mechanism to spend it.
Right.
It's not. So a circuit breaker, we spend right out of the circuit breaker fund. Right now, today, the homeless reimbursement, transportation reimbursement comes, and it will go to a revenue line we can't spend. And so that's something that we're advocating strongly, that they change so that we can access it and spend it. So in the region side, what will happen is, then in theory, we'll have extra expenses this year will cause us to go a little bit over budget on the line. And then next year, we'll have unbudgeted revenue for homeless transportation revenue, which will go to E and D in the same year. So in the region, we'll be okay. On CPS side, homeless transportation will go to revenue for the town of Concord, which we won't have access to unless.
I'll just add to that a little, because Friday I was on with the legislators in DESI and DHCD. They all are aware that going to the municipality isn't necessarily helpful to the school district. In some cases, in previous experiences, the districts have never gotten the money. I'm not saying that would happen here. So they're actually working to try to help with the mechanisms as well, so that it's direct reimbursement to the school district. We are going to start getting per pupil for the in-district kids, and that's going to come directly to the school district, both for the region and CPS. So they're, they're, they're working. The transportation piece is the next big thing to figure out.
And our last estimate was 76,000 prostitute districts, so less than we anticipated initially. But that's where we are now, unless there's more students, at least long term. So that's the kind of view of the region. Unless there's any questions, we'll go to CPS.
Well, we'll do CPS at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question. First, substitutes. So we have a big adjustment, like, in the substitute. Looks like you've adjusted down.
Yeah.
Does that mean that it seems like we've returned to sort of a pre-COVID norm of substitute reliance?
So we have not encumbered, we don't encumber substitutes. It's a long-term subsidy, but the daily subs, we don't. That's like, as it happens.
Yep.
I think, based on what I've seen recently, I think we're going to have to increase that.
Okay.
To cover the costs between now and June. So it seemed, the way it was projected early in the year, that we weren't really hardly spending anything. We've had, I think, a couple of teachers go out on long-term leave, and so we're going to have to pay them some extra pay for teachers. So I think that's going to, we're not going to, we're going to have to put some money back into that.
And I wonder if you could speak a little bit about this interplay. There are a lot of movements in, like, guidance counselor and psychological, and I'm just wondering, like, savings in the 88,000 in savings in psychological, but then there's an increase about 80,000 in guidance counselors. Is it that somebody's changed positions or something? I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, with all the psychological needs, like, how do we find savings?
The school psychologist serving as the interim dean of students.
Okay. It's a position so that, okay.
Yeah, with the principal, not there, we filled that with school psychologist. So that's the savings in the school psychologist line.
And then that goes into, that becomes part of the guidance line then, or the curriculum director? Their gains?
I can look into the guidance line. I can send an email on top of my head.
Yeah, 78,000 increases. So it looks like it's, it will look like the guidance and psychology kind of. We did backfill the psychologist who's moved over to the dean, so that could be what it is. We'll have to track it back. Okay. Yes, yes. 88,000. It probably is that, because now that you say that, we backfilled with a counselor, not a psychologist. So it could be that. Okay. And then curriculum directors, there's also a thing in that one. 74,000. Are you in the 100s? Yeah, the 100s. Oh, gotcha. And if you don't have it in front of you, you can certainly.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The what number is the term? I said it's 21,000. Breaking through this. This is $75,000 increase. And what was the other line in there? The other lines. So those were, they're psychological, 2800 for psychological is reduced by 88,000, but then guidance counselors is 2710, and that's increased by 78,000. So it seemed there's some kind of swap, like, those two would make sense. Yeah, well, yeah. We can get back to you. Would you want to look?
Yeah, I can, I can look into that. Send an email.
No, we wouldn't see the change. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'll look into that and shoot an email explanation on that.
Because that's, I mean, for psychological, it's a big, it's a big chunk. Okay. Any other questions before we move on?
I'd like to make a motion to re-approve transfers. I know we have a couple of questions on the table, but I won't prevent us from approving these, thinking it'd be a wise practice or not.
Are we transferring right now?
You're moving line items.
Yeah, this is what Dorothy, Tracy Novick recommended at our workshop, that we approve them quarterly. I do think if you look at the, I'm sorry, just look at the other administration category, there's a credit, I think, that somebody was classified to from the budget process, one of the positions that moved to curriculum directors. And again, I'll put that in an email and explain why. But yeah, what Tracy had recommended is that you vote to approve the transfers at the 1,000 level.
1,000.
Quarterly. Best practice.
Yeah. And not Tracy Marado. Tracy.
So please consider.
To approve these.
To approve the cost center transfers to the 1,000 level as presented.
Second, there are, sure. So just a little bit of discussion on this. So are you making transfers at the 1,000 level right now? Could you provide a little clarity on that? Like, do we need a motion on this?
So we technically need it at the end of the year.
The end of the year.
What Tracy said was, I think, about to be quarterly. So it's not on here as a business item. So I'd say maybe that it's not, we should go to the speeding. We haven't had that practice in the past. We've been planning on going forward, but it's not on the agenda. So that's your decision.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. So we'll have some discussion on that. I guess I'm taken a little bit by surprise by that, so I'm not really ready to throw down that tonight. But I need to note, there aren't any cost level center transfers, are there? Yeah. Adjustments.
Every adjustment is one. I brought the motion.
Wait, where part? Which one?
District leadership is reduced by 106. Instructional leadership is increased by 50. Other school services increased by 105, and so on. These are significant. We've been, we've been on this subject for months now. And so I assume it's merely oversight. It's supposed to be both tonight. I think a long after the fact, end of fiscal year, when things are closed down, to then approve, approve it is quite a look in the rearview mirror. It has no need, whereas it has meaning now if we do this when our district superintendent brings these transfers to us on a quarterly basis.
Which is probably why one Tracy. Recommended.
It's about transparency. It's about.
It doesn't fix you, too. Like, then you, that's why Tracy knows, you do it every quarter, just to sort of. Yeah. Tap on this to do it. Yeah. But it's not that, it's not that it's not like limits anybody's ability to make further adjustments. So if they want to go to the substitute adjustment, right, then, yeah, that's.
Who's your father is going to bring more to us?
Yeah, right. It's always a fluid.
Just to, just to be clear, realistically, pretty much every school district right now, they will process these as they go, and their approvals are obtained after the fact. Like, we wouldn't be able to run this, if we had to call and approval to move something from line to line. So this is transparency, but quarterly, it's kind of a meets the, I guess, the legal requirements policy.
Yeah.
And Rob, I think we had that conversation where, where it was pretty clear to the entire school committee that never would a vote have to happen prior to the operational changes required by.
Right. This is not, this, but this is not the practice that we had last year either.
Exactly.
So we did the end of the year, so there was no movement to do this last year. I guess I would just be more comfortable waiting till our next meeting. I don't know. I just feel like I've taken a bit by surprise getting it right now in the meeting. So, but we could certainly go to it. I'm happy. Yeah, I would, I don't know if I can make a motion to, like, I would like to consider this next week. I would need to think about it more. Again, it feels like a surprise. And had members in the past asked for time to consider things, when things have been brought up and they've been honored historically several times this year already. So I would just hope, I would think that we should extend that same courtesy to Tracy asking for some time to consider it. We can put it on next week's, next meeting's agenda.
I would only note that we're not really considering it, because I don't think we are going to put Bob's recommendation in jeopardy in the next seven days.
No, no, sure. But I just, I'm taken by surprise. And I'll just be honest, I'm taken by surprise, and I, I just, I'm just not ready to have a vote on this time.
All right. This is an area where I think we don't need any more surprises. We've been discussing this for months. So I'll wait a week, but I would like to not have the same conversation again and again. We've had this conversation before with Tracy Novick and without Tracy. This is, this is easy stuff.
No, it is easy stuff. It is easy stuff. No, I agree. But I think that, you know, when the agenda overview comes up, that would be the time that, you know, hey, I have this idea. Could we get this on the agenda? I guess I would have had preference to that courtesy. That's it. And I think, I think the other is. What we can note on it, that's fine. No, no, but irrespective of that, I think that what, what we're, what you're doing tonight with this motion is, in April, introducing something new that wasn't done last year when we had different chairs and wasn't done the prior year, even when you were a chair. So I think, I'm, I think that, I think, is the element of surprise. I think, and I think that that's fair.
Well, your surprise is not my surprise. I see this coming from any month, but I'm happy to withdraw my motion. I'd like to take it up next week, and I'd like to make quarterly transfers subject to school committee approval, matter of course, because then we'll be surprised. That's the appropriate way to do it. Let's do it.
All right. So we'll put that on our next agenda. All right. Any other questions for? All right. So now, at this point, welcome to everyone who's joined us in the room. Please help yourself to pizza or anything else that's here. And I would like to welcome our CEO of Metco Inc., Millie. I'm going to pronounce your last name.
Arvah.
Arvah, hey, Thomas. So come on over.
Awesome. Thank you.
You have the mic.
I have the mic.
I'm driving your.
You know, I always love to be. Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me? This is spooky. Can I hear me actually? Oh, but what about the camera? Or they can't see.
Yes, she is. I just can't.
Well, first of all, everybody, thank you so much for having me be here. I know we had to reschedule this during the last storm, and I was very excited to, to meet with you all. I just left the best for school committee, and they were like, are you staying with us? I'm sorry, Concord. I actually scheduled me first. I gotta go. So I just left them at the office with our whole school committee meeting over there. So it's a pleasure to be with, actually, this size of a group. Usually, it's a smaller crowd, and that, that's usually the school committee. It's just really nice to have this size of representation. And I also wanted to acknowledge and thank all the work that you guys have been doing for those of you that have been around for the last few years. I know there's been some significant work happening in Concord and Concord Carlyle, that your subcommittee, you had a subcommittee back in the day for TEI that now has become a real committee where everybody is coming. Your adopted policies on how to deal with bias and racial incidents, that you have a uniform which we address across the district. I know our Metco students got a bus on Saturdays. There's a room that the high schoolers were advocated for, were able to obtain. And the fact that we have two directors now, as opposed to back in the day, it was just Andrew with multiple hats. And now we have three people, you know, doing this kind of work of integration and having that equity lens. I just wanted to commend you for this work. And, you know, often, I know that there's a lot of funky roads to this kind of work in general in education, then particularly add integration to this, and then add the racial climate in this country to that. So all of this is difficult. But I always use you guys as an example, for saying about how when people organize, when parents speak up, when students speak up, when the administration is willing to listen, when the school committee is willing to listen, how we can bring about some change. And I just wanted to at least acknowledge that and tell you how happy I am to see that, to see that work happening. Because in some systems, it takes a very, very long time, and the Metco program began as grassroots with the voices of parents, suburban, suburban working together. And this is exactly what you guys are continuing. It's what I call the Metco 2.0 vision, going back to the 57 years ago when we started as a program, and how do we reignite that sense of duty and commitment to really do better. So I just, that was just like my little introduction to just say thank you for that work. So I have, Lord, first of all, how much time do I have?
15 minutes.
Wow. An hour to 15.
About 20-ish, I think.
One hour presentation to half an hour, then afterwards you got 15.
You take what time you need.
All right. And thank you to the Metco parents, the Mingus. I know we've been working back a year ago in terms of getting, getting the seats here. So it's really good to see you here, and I haven't met the other people here, but, you know, so glad to have a Metco rep involved in this. All right. So I'm going to, do you do slideshow?
I cannot get it to project when I go to slideshow. So.
That's fine. Sure.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to debate because of the timing, if I'm going to show a video or if I'm going to be speaking, but there's a video that's really, really powerful that I think I do want to show you, and I'll probably leave that at the end. This is one of the videos I can share. This is actually already shared with you, and I actually made it just for Concord, so you can share it back with everybody afterwards. Okay? So how many of you are new? I recognize you. How many of you are new to the school committee in the last couple of years? Okay, all right, very good. So that means I definitely, this is going to be helpful to know some of the ins and outs of the program. All right. So I'm going to leave you to watch this video, and if there's time at the end, you tell me there's time, and then we can go back to it by just to the same time. So, you know, the Metco program, this is how the size of our Metco program. So you know, the Mecca program, um, this is how the size of our Mecca program right now, so this is my one-on-one presentation. I think it's very important for everybody to know that a little bit about the basics. You can be part of Mecca and, you know, be part of our, our only thirty-three communities that now understand, now we still do just simple information, some mission and vision and purpose. So right now, the Mecca program has three thousand one hundred and fifty-five students, so we exist in thirty-three communities across the Commonwealth. And this is where our communities are basically located right now and also in terms of size. Um, Brooklyn, New Haven, Lexington, Big B are the largest communities and then having a whole bunch of them in the middle size and then some very tiny towns as well. So this is really important for some people to suddenly see this and also when did you guys become, become, okay, sixty-seven, okay, sixty-seven and sixty-eight for Concord and Concord Carlisle. You know, when you, when you have another meeting, I would love for you to come to HQ because we have an exhibit hall and I really need you to see that exhibit. It's really powerful and if you're not already in our mailing list to get my monthly messages, you can let Lori know, because you can just get this, that's only for Mecca leadership only. And it's really talking about everything that's happening across our network, you know, and it's, um, one of the things that's important to know if you were at the exhibit hall is that in nineteen sixty-eight, does anybody happen to know what happened historically? Something very big and important that happened in nineteen sixty-eight that was tragic and kind of shook the nation and a lot of people responded.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Tell me.
Dr. King was assassinated.
Yes, and Dr. King was assassinated. It's very important historical context for Mecca because if you see that line right there, it literally was when the Mecca program doubled its size. So what do you think that might have happened? What do you think happened during that time? Why did so many suburban communities come to the table and say, I want to join the Mecca program? What do you think? Kristen.
They want to bring forward his, his message.
Yeah, I think so too. You know, they wanted to do something, they wanted to respond and then I actually, myself, I signed it, it's not going to work with me. If you guys know, I, I just, I just don't do well with.
We might have told you fifteen, now it's gonna be thirty.
I'm gonna start at fourteen minutes now. All right, cool. So, all right, the next slide. So the Mecca program, the mission of the Mecca program or how it started was really, really to address two things. Racial segregation in the, in the city of Boston, in the Boston public schools, and racial isolation in the suburban communities. And what I love about the Mecca program, we are literally fifty-seven years old right now. As of just two weeks ago, we had a birthday and it was started by parents, urban and suburban. And that's what I love about the Mecca program. We can continue to remember that it was not government intervention. It was not, you know, mandate, it was literally voluntarily, people in the suburbs and in the Boston got together. Boston was trying to get, Boston Black parents were trying to make Boston schools better in their own neighborhoods. That school committee said, no, we're not going to integrate. The suburbs started to hear what was happening in Boston and inviting our mother over with facts and instead, I hear what's happening. Boston may not want you, we can look, we're all Boston, but we want you and we believe that we can benefit from you here. And it was a dual benefit. Mecca parents, the Boston parents were looking for great education opportunities while the suburban parents were looking for diversity. Instead, I don't want my child to grow in isolation, I want them to learn from other people that exist in the world and from each other, from friendships. And that happened in Brooklyn, it's open in each year. So I always say that, that's why I love school committees, because if you really understand the power that you have to start a program fifty-seven years ago that still exists today, that began with almost no money and that now has twenty-nine million dollars. It's like crazy, so you guys have so much power to really do what this city has done. So here comes the segregation part of this, this plus just a little bit about Boston demographic and then the demographics of, um, the suburbs. This is very important for you to know that that's sixty-three percent, it's hardly really the truth. That is our thirty-three communities combined together. Most of them are ninety percent white and then a little bit of diversity, but that is as a program where we stand to kind of show that there's still a need for the Mecca program and inspiration. And over here, it shows you and you know, correct me if I'm wrong with any of this, because I got this stuff from the state data and from testing, but this is your demographic right now. So actually, you're not as bad as the majority, if I'm dealing with it, a ninety-something percent, so that's not too bad, seventy-three percent. But it's important for you to know what kind of a percentage is that though, um, because of that, of that diversity that exists on the other, on the other colors. You don't know, is it, is it European? Is it mostly Asian? Is it mostly Indian? What is it? I always like to say that because people have told me, well, we don't need the Mecca program anymore because we're getting diverse, or even though we have urban diversity. And that's something that is very unique and very important to actually, um, to actually talk about. Because most of the racism and the racial incidents happening right now have to do with the group, with those groups of, you know, of individuals, Latinos, that, you know, African-American, that people in the inner city, you know? And that's why we really believe that it's not just any diversity, but really the urban diversity that is being denied, you know, some opportunities for, that people are discriminating against these days, like Mexico-run walls, you know? Because you don't want in separated children, that Black Lives Matter, those are all very specific to a certain population. So we do believe that there's an urban side of it that not every single other group can bring. And right now you have seventy-one students, sorry, you have seventy-one students. And then I think I could be off by one or two, because we're always like a little bit behind in Concord. And then the per pupil reimbursement is eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars per Mecca student right now. Bringing the total grants, um, for Concord to six, um, six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars and then the one for Concord Carlisle. Maybe some, some people did this wrong, this is, I think this, is this right or is it the opposite? This is right, that's right. Okay. I thought my stuff did it the wrong way, okay? And then this is how much we get for, um, for the Concord Carlisle High School. There's something very important here that you should know, we can go to the next one, see if you can still my blind, blind ones. It's okay.
It doesn't work when you.
So right now we are at twenty-nine million dollars, like I mentioned, and, and what I wanted to stay here, how the Mecca program is funded, okay? We are under the Racial Inbalance Act of Massachusetts. There is a legal law that came out in nineteen sixty-five, I think it was, nineteen sixty-five. And basically it said that it was illegal in Massachusetts not to integrate public schools. And if you don't actually try to integrate, you will lose your state funding. It's called the Racial Inbalance Act. And the only program that falls under that act right now is the Mecca program. So we are legally backed by this law in the state of Massachusetts. Then we get the Mecca line item, which right now we're in lobby season, so we're advocating to our state legislators to ensure that we get our funding again tomorrow. That the House releases their budget and then we'll deal with the Senate and hopefully the governor will give us the increase that we're asking for. There's also chapter seventy money. I didn't put that here because you know what your chapter seventy reimbursement is? How much is your chapter seventy reimbursement per student? Like eleven thousand?
Our spending, yeah, our spending is twenty-three thousand.
No, but chapter seventy, that's, that's foundation, the money that follows from the state for student.
The foundation is more like twelve, thirteen thousand.
Right, yeah. So this is important for you to know, because not everybody always knows this. So that foundation dollars, what the state puts in, to actually, you know, with your tax dollars to come to up with your per pupil. So right now, um, every Mecca student is enrolled in your school district, so they're full members of your community. So whatever your enrollment is for Mecca, you get that times the twelve thousand as well. So it's really more than the Mecca grant. So whatever the Mecca grant is, you get that again via the back rows of chapter seventy plus more. So whatever we just came up with here, I just inform for you to know that, because some people don't know that there's other money to help with administration, to help with just running a school system. But whatever Mecca students you have, you multiply that times the number of, um, your chapter seventy dollars and that is how much more, for instance, what I think is at least four million dollars for you guys. So that's how the Mecca program works in terms of finances, but the other thing for you to know, where the available seat program, marginal seat. What is marginal seat means, that means that the classroom exists and the teachers exist and therefore there is no, um, that's, that's, the cost of the Mecca program is marginal. Meaning that we will not force you to open up a school or another classroom or hire new teachers as part of you being in the program. We go wherever there's seats available. So that, I always say this is a win-win situation for everyone because your seats will go empty. You're getting Mecca money, you're getting chapter seventy money, you're getting, um, diverse hires and you're getting diverse students. So it's a win-win situation for everyone to be part of the Mecca program. Otherwise the seats will go unfilled and, and, you know, and, and we're not working in this together. So that's why we will never be a reimbursement of, of a vote per pupil. If you guys are per pupil of twenty-two thousand, Mecca will never reach that. We're at eight thousand right now, but you do get it in other ways and your seats would have been empty anyways. Quote-unquote, right? I mean, some school districts tell me that they're overcrowded. I mean, I go to Brooklyn and my mother there and high school is overcrowded by four hundred students, four hundred. We have classrooms in hallways, in libraries, the Pierce School in Brooklyn, super overcrowded. So our thirty-five Mecca students in that school did not cause overcrowdedness. So yes, it's overcrowded, but not the Mecca students. So we always try to remind people of that. So a lot of people say that the Mecca program is, you know, is a, a busing program and I always tell people, let's try to get away from that. And even the news refers to us as that, but we are, we buss as our mode of transportation. We're not about moving, bussing and people. We have even bussing people around, we're about moving people's minds and hearts. And what is that equal to after that? Is basically that, that impact that we're expected to have with the Mecca program is that through this participation, we are appreciating diversity, breaking down racial barriers, learning together from each other in the classroom and preparing to be part of a global economy that is becoming more and more diverse. If you have any questions about that historical part of the Mecca work, so let me know and I'm happy to answer questions. I'm gonna just now get to what's happening today. Any questions or thoughts about mechanic and purpose? Okay, awesome. All right, so you know, Mecca today, this is on my office right here, so Mecca headquarters, and this is, um, a core thing that we basically focus on, um, at our agency. So we focus on student recruitment and referral. We are the, we, we are the site that recruits all of the students and employs them out to consideration placement. We also do students and support services in-house. Um, and we have a whole team that does that. If you get in our Monday message, you receive that this week particularly was all about student supports. We had SAT classes, we had money to hire kids to be, um, to work this summer at your town and we pay them. We had Mecca University workshops, all kinds of things going on. We're also the convener, so we are the ones that bring our thirty-three communities together and convene us to basically talk about what needs to happen within the Mecca program. Like we easily changed the admissions policy to ensure that it was actually equitable and that we were competitive right now. What's happening to all the students in Boston and we collectively, you know, met as a Mecca community to decide where we're gonna be going forward. And then we also, the ones that are continuing to fulfill this promise of integration, that we are an integration program. So wherever we can do national conversations, we're part of a book with Jonathan Kozel right now that's coming now. We do seminars and webinars, we talk to legislators about this and we want to make sure that we continue to talk about, you know, integration, how this benefits everyone. Because nobody should be educated in isolation. Um, in terms of enrollment, just one thing that is important to note that the Mecca program is not income-based. I don't know if some of you might have thought that, but that happens a lot. People think it's about income. It is purposely not about income, when it began in the sixties, it was about diversification. And if we just only focus on low-income students, we are, you know, really living up to the stereotype that every single Black people person is poor and uneducated and that is not true. We have everything. We have, you know, people who are really well and we have people that are, you know, that are in public housing, homeowners, apartments, you know, went to college, didn't go to college, all of that. We are just trying to show a representation of all the diversity that we have in the city of Boston. And this past year, we had to do this, this campaign during the pandemic, hashtag work the ride. These are all of our students actually at different communities because a lot of people were frustrated whether it was for the rights to come to the Mecca program because of the racial incidents happening, you know, maybe not feeling welcomed enough. You know, now we have more schools here in Boston, more charter schools, new buildings, exam schools. So it's not the same thing as in the sixties when we started. So really making it feel like, you know, our students are wanting, the district wants us there. They want to make the educational spaces better, not for us, for everybody, as we all benefit from having an inclusive curriculum, diverse staff, you know, uh, an equity lens to become compassionate human beings in the future. And these are just a little bit of the programs that we actually have. So we basically have a summer school that we're running this summer and it's kind of been one of our schools here in Boston, fully staffed with master's level teachers, a principal, a social worker, a nurse. And that is our way to ensure that right here in our community, where schools are in session, we have something going on here to ensure that we are addressing any gaps. We have an after-school program right now, we do SAT classes. We have a youth leadership program that means every Wednesday, they're talking about issues of leadership development. And we have Mecca University, a different topic, it's like recently, we just talked about I E Ps with two lawyers. We just had the United Negro College Fund come and talk about H B C U's, historically black colleges and things like that, so that our families have another level of access to topics that are relevant to what they might be going through. The other thing in this next slide that I like, I'm not gonna get into all of these explanations, but what is, what is saying here is that we, this integration philosophy is going beyond just integrating our school system. These are all of the people that have reached out to us to give us free scholarship, free money, free opportunities, because they want to integrate their spaces. So basically they want to let Island School, this like, a program in the Bahamas.
My sister-in-law on top there.
Awesome.
We visited a lot in those years.
I've been trying to get them to send me there and okay the program.
They need your offers.
Yes, but you know, we have, we have four years already going there, it's a full ride. It costs fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars and we send a Mecca student to two every single year. I think one year was one of your students. Yeah, what's her name? Kalise.
Kalise.
Yeah.
Winter.
Yeah, so yeah, one of your students died a couple of years ago and she's like going on to all of inflection recruiting Equinaw. And Emerson College, for example, gave us a four-year ride to college with room board, books and meal plan, literally. And this other university, we just graduated, it was not here anymore, because they don't give it to me anymore, but they gave me two scholarships, four years and two students already graduated. That's gonna be fifteen minutes. All right, so that's just examples of things that are going on. Convening communities, we actually have Mecca presents, we go to the theater here in downtown Boston and we have a partnership with them and we only pick shows of cultural relevance. And we basically go to the theater and then after the theater, we meet the cast, we have hors d'oeuvres, we sometimes drink like for COVID. But we have a whole reception afterwards to bring our communities together. I don't believe we just, I was going to see a show and leaving, if it's not with a reception, I don't do it. Um, and then cultural mini-grants, um, and also on benefited from this era a few years ago before the pandemic, where we actually asked, paid for a show to come to you, Mr. Joy. And you guys, that's, that was through HQ as well, you know? So those are a couple of things that we do to make sure that we are enhancing some of the work that's happening. And then we have our Nubian tours, which next week you all should have received it, you're in our mailing list, but we're doing three tours next week. And it's during school vacation of Nubian Square and our exhibit hall. And we have a funder that gave us, that gave us money, that she wants us to add food at the end of the, of the tour, of any cultural ethnic group, just to make sure that people can have a time to mingle on afterwards. And, um, that's our new space, we are, we would love to host you when you can have a meeting there. This is the exhibit hall where most of the school committee meetings happen there on the bottom in our conference room. And, and the next thing is our exhibit, um, I'm sorry, our Nubian Square tour is happening next week, where you can sit there to register. Integration advocacy, we are in the middle of lobby season right now, like I mentioned, so our, right now we're twenty-nine million dollars and we're asking for thirty-two point two million dollars, an increase of two point eight million dollars. If you have any cloud with any, whether you do or you don't, every voice counts. Out of the actual requests is for everybody just to call their legislator, senators and, 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 and state rep and tell them, please support Mecca's full ask. And our justification why we're asking for more money this year is because we, we say that there's inflation, so we have, we have to be able to align an increase to inflation. And we want to increase our interest in program and have money set aside to do more interest in work. And we want to expand the Mecca program to a hundred and sixteen seats in six communities that got approved already for expansion. But we will not be expanding unless some money comes in. So that is where we are with that, you can definitely do some of that. And that's how you can help. This is our video from our advocacy day, this past couple of weeks, it was to the Concord High School, so this spoke, there were the speakers, it was amazing. And that is all the people that showed up on that day, um, you know, to talk about Mecca, went really well. And then what is two-point-O? Mecca two-point-O really is this vision of, um, you know, really this is what I've been coining of my time, I would say, my era in Mecca. Because everybody has their, their time there with the Mecca program. But two-point-O is really how do we go back to that vision originally when we started and how do we live up to better expectations? But how do we hold each other accountable to becoming a better school community? Again, not for Mecca students and parents, please, never for just that, for everybody. Because again, we all benefit through this. So that is, you know, what I've been calling our two-point-O, we got five hundred thousand dollars, you know, next year, this year, that we're using it right now. And we're doing, um, a blueprint of the Mecca program best practices. We are doing a continuum of practice of how to assess yourself as a Mecca community, how you're doing and we're making that part of the Mecca grant. That every, you can pick an area you want to work on and that you want to, you know, make some movement around that. And we just. And we just met with Suffolk University today to hire them to do a systemic-wide training for all of MECO or members toward justice practices. So that's in the works right now. We just had a subcommittee for that. You can go to the next one. And basically, that's what, you know, MECO two point O means. It means that only thirty-three communities in Massachusetts are doing this. We are special. And you have to feel that special feeling. If you don't feel that special feeling, then there's something that, that's not connected. You know, there is some special membership there. Not everybody is doing what we're doing. Not everybody has been added to the MECO program in over forty years. This is the first time I've ever looking at adding anybody on right now. It carries, it does carry great responsibility, but we can and we must do better if all of our students benefit when we educate with anti-racism in mind. Because who wants to be labeled a racist, just to say it straight out, right? Then we all benefit from this. Anti-anything is a good thing. That means we are for inclusion. We are for love. We are for getting along. We are for a better future. We all benefit from that, and we should do that now. Because we have seen this in our time in the last couple of years, racism has been very, very bold. None of these pictures are old. They're all very recent. We all lived through all of this. But what can happen with MECO is that MECO can be even bolder. This is all of our communities back in the day, and now standing up and saying, let's do better. Okay, and I'm just gonna just take it. This is our founding mother here, Ruth Bastin, who basically said, by the way, this is a picture from nineteen sixty-six and a few years ago, kind of like right over each other. And this is business as usual, as a way of life, must be totally discredited. So I just really encourage you not to do things the way that has been done, because we, nobody improves when there's no change of any kind. You know, everything you've taken up, whether it's MECO or something else, we all have room for improvement. And what, and what can we do with this, with this special call to action to becoming a two point O MECO? Is the next slide here, which means we can be looking at how to diversify our teachers so that others, all students, even included white students, can see people looking different from them, a different perspective. You know, I remember that my daughter, you know, was telling me that the whole these years, her friends had never seen someone that looked different. And that it was when they had that first teacher, colors, like, oh, wow, like, there are teachers that can be different. And with a different perspective, and with a different, you know, style or pizzazz or whatever, you know. We can also have a representative curriculum, and that's one that I really talk about a lot, because my own daughters experienced this, and, you know, this is probably, I always remember, my own daughters, you know, experiences in their school system where they told me, mommy, are you sure that you are, that you are Latina? I'm like, yes, I'm very sure I am. Why are you asking me this question? She's like, well, in none of our Spanish classes, kindergarten, have they ever talked about Dominican Republic? And what do you think the curriculum includes in Spanish class? What two countries? And you're gonna guess a hundred percent which two countries? Spain and Mexico. That's all you hear about in the Spanish curriculum. So I went to talk to the students, can we do something about this? And then everybody picked up on the country, everybody had a present, and all of that. And also, there's a curriculum also that at one point, I lived by my personal experiences, that one point, my daughter really upset, because she had to do homework, and like, why can't I get you to do the homework assignment? Sorry, I just saw that MECO little notebook. I want one. You know, and she had to do an assignment where she had to defend slavery. So they divided the class in half, pros and cons. And she just couldn't get that homework done. So we met with the principal, we met with the teacher. We had to do some restorative work afterwards, because people, even her own white suburban friends felt uncomfortable trying to take a side or enroll dilemma. And the way that I put it was very, you know, is a very simplistic way to put it in this community. And I said to them, if, if we had to take the same assignment to defend the Holocaust, would we do it? These are pros and cons. I said, so why are we doing this for slavery? And after that, everybody died. So like, so now they took the money from the MECO grant, and they just did a whole overhaul of their history curriculum for the entire district, like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But they used the money for that, not the entire district, but then a roll-out of new history curriculum. So that's what happens when MECO was there, because MECO just challenges, just to see a blind spot that you may not have found that on purpose, you may not have known. But now they're getting better because of it. The entire school system has benefited from it. We should not be disciplining people for what they did wrong. We should be trying to restore. How do we get better? And how do we forgive each other? How do we move on? So here, it just really tells you why we're working on the two point O, the theory of change, that if we literally work at every single MECO, every single student, sorry, every student in a MECO community, in a MECO district, who experiences an equitable and anti-racist education. That is our mission for two point O. Notice it not saying every MECO student, every student in a MECO district will receive all of this, by being a part of it, and we're working with our parents not to elevate their voices, which has happened in Concord, or working with our resident fans to get them to be allies and supporters, so they impact those two arrows there, impact administration, to bring about some changes, all of which we have seen parts of that here in, in Concord. And I think I'm at the, yeah.
Show those two.
And then I love, and do this, but that was a little surprising at the end. We actually, you know, this is, if I can just read, so Ruth Bastin, one of, I can have somebody from the school committee chair. Okay, Alexa, come on, read this for me.
I believe that integration is as much a part of education as is reading, writing, and arithmetic. We can't, we just can't live in an isolated world. I can't think of anywhere natural way for kids to learn that there are other people in the world than through school.
Just love it. That was our founding mother back in the sixties, and we're still trying to live up to that. So, and if we do that, this is what happens with these little two guys that we've already pretty much. You know, imagine if we start early on, you know, what could happen with this kind of love and appreciation among another. So that is the end of my official presentation. If you have like a minute or so, a video.
Thank you so much.
It's so nice. Yeah, okay, thank you. Now, let's do that one. Actually, let me, as I already, let me do the one that was after.
Oh, you wanna, I'm sorry, yeah, they said.
Remember the one that we, that we did for that, yeah, this one. Music kind of play, yeah, that one. We just did this for our leadership, which we all met at a stadium, and we put this together that reminds us. I don't know.
Sound might be good.
You have to turn your volume up.
It's because the hour is on.
Okay. This is so awesome, and I never get tired of it. This reminds me of what we do this work, you know? All of those pictures were real, just lived moments by our community, the suburbs here, now, then. And I just look forward to the rest of the pictures that we're gonna be adding, when we really feel like we, we can be proud of being part of MECO now. It's kind of getting so emotional, but, anybody have any questions? Yes. Alexa.
I'd like to. Um, one of the things that has been of interest to me, I've talked to, I think, the superintendent about it. But I'm, question probably better for you. So I, as someone who attended this school, and I now see, you know, it's been around, the program's been around long enough that you're starting to see sort of multi-generational families putting their children, Ayesha, for example, into MECO, and some of the friends that I have kept in touch with and are still friends with. One of the, an obstacle that they continue to discuss is how to, as a second or even third generation MECO family, the selection of the schools that the kids go to. And a lot of people saying, you know, I really want my child to enroll in MECO, but only if they, like me, go to Wentworth Brookline or Concord or whatever. And is that?
I understand.
So continue, yes.
Oh, yeah, just, I mean, so like, and I know, and I, I don't remember who I spoke with at headquarters about it, but I asked someone, and they were talking about how that is a challenging thing, because you wanna be, you know, equitable for all kids. But then, you know, people do have kind of allegiance for the school they went to, like, or nostalgia, or, or in very pragmatic sense. They have friends that then live there, and it's like, well, if, you know, not that Ayesha and I were friends in high school, we're gonna, anyway. But, uh, but like, it was like, oh, you know, I want my, I wanna be able to call my friends who I went to high school with to be able to pick up my kid in case they missed the bus or that kind of thing. So I want, like, I wonder as MECO moves forward and becomes sort of this multi-generational program, how you guys sort of think about that, address that.
So Alexa, when did you ask that question? How long ago?
This fall.
It was, uh, it was last spring.
Oh, it might have been last, last.
Last spring, perfect. Yeah, so I might have the perfect answer to that, which is we've changed this since then.
Yeah.
We actually spent the entire spring and summer meeting with superintendents and MECO directors in the Department of Education. And this past fall, we adopted a new policy, so our MECO policy has just recently changed. And basically, it allows you to choose up to three communities that you want to attend. And that's where, probably this is the first year that we're doing this, that you get to pick three choices. And if you're an alumni, if you have a relationship with a MECO director that you really, you know, feel that they're gonna take care of you if you work nearby, all of those things are now taken into account. So that is a hundred percent why I moved it as part of this two point O, we've been changing whatever we end, to make sure that it's equitable even for our families. Like, we have to have school choice. We've never had that in all of MECO's fifty-seven year history. You had to go wherever you landed. So now you get to pick where, where you go, and that's, and that means that really when the directors are doing, they can support us in recruitment. Now, before, there was not a lot of incentive for recruitment. They're like, well, you guys do at HQ, because I don't know who I'm gonna get any, because now we had our first ever MECO showcase this past December, I think it was. And we were all at, in a, in a boys' and girls' club in Dorchester, and we had hundreds of families. They came out of the newspaper and everything. We couldn't even fit in there. But that was because we announced that you have a choice now. Every single school district had a table, and parents were going around and shopping. Like shopping, so to speak, you know. So that means that when you're doing really well as a community, you can publicly say what you're trying to do for equity and how you embrace having a MECO community program in there. Now more families are gonna wanna actually select you too, because our parents are doing their homework. You know, so the more that you're doing to move ahead, the more enticed you are now that there is choice. So when you figure out that there's not that many people in your queue, a pocket of Concord, that's a problem. And you gotta go look and figure out what's going on. But now your directors can help with that, your alumni can help with that. And we're actually trying to implement something that we haven't done before, which is bus tours. As you selected where you wanna go, we actually want to implement this summer, bus tours. And literally, like, meet at HQ, we're gonna take you to the North Shore, we're gonna take you to the South Shore. We're gonna go to these three schools, and when we come in and out, it's like an open house. Come in, you know, and receive the families, welcome, and talk about a little bit about what they have to look forward to, show you all your campuses, and then, and then keep going, and then that would entice people to then, you know, probably select you as well. So that is the new process now. Any other type of questions? I think it was, yes?
Just a comment. When you finished the first presentation, I thought it was pretty powerful, you talked about bold and bolder.
Yeah.
And speaking for myself, maybe for my colleagues, I think we all need help being bolder. But the change you just referred to is a real call to action to be bolder. Because it means we have more opportunity to be more assertive about trying to present Concord and Concord Carlisle as a really attractive place to be.
Yeah, and you know, in addition, thank you for noticing that and saying that, because, you know, we believe that your MECO community, you should just, don't be afraid to say why you're part of the MECO program. And if you truly don't wanna be part of that, have eleven other communities waiting. You know, so like, let's talk about this, you know, and how do we all benefit? It has to be a benefit for everyone, that our community is embracing everything that it's doing in terms of inclusion in all aspects, not just race, but everything else that, you know, that's going on. And imagine also, I've heard a lot of teachers tell me in the past, and a lot of superintendents have actually told me, that, you know, why I took this job is because it's a MECO community. So that's also a attractive sport, not just to other families, but to like, I've heard, I've talked to people and teachers and people that live in the suburbs who told me, I decided to move here because MECO was here. I've heard that. Thank you for that comment.
I just wanna say thank you for, just like explaining what MECO was, like, one of our, one of my big challenges as a parent, with my son, Ayesha, he's gone through there, is dealing with other parents that live there, Concord, other adults that say crazy things to me and to think that MECO is just an income-based program, like what MECO actually looks like. So I think that's important for us to send that message that MECO looks very different for all different families. You know, it's not just a little text. I think that would take some, you know, a lot of like, things, instances that happen at school. You know, it starts at home, parents, teachers, people that come to school, you know, we feel different at home. So I think it's important to send that message. I mean, it looks different.
You know, one of the things that I would love every single MECO community to happen, when we do this continuum of practice that we're developing right now, it's gonna be the first ever raised document about what I deal, and I deal MECO community looks like in different, in different levels. One of the things that every single community that's MECO should have a one-on-one for their entire community. Like, I can do this for you guys just on Zoom, you know what I mean? Like, I've been trying to like figure out how do we then, you know, deploy this information out at all levels, you know, starting with you guys, but then how do we go professional? And MECO, that's my favorite, the MECO University idea. Any topic, in-person or virtual, our thirty-three communities can join. Let's talk about what, you know, what MECO is, what MECO is doing. How can you be part of this movement? And you notice when I saw, when I showed you the theory of change, it did not exclude the suburban parents and students. If they're not part of this equation, and they're not learning with us and growing with us, then we're missing the mark. Because it's really about transforming that whole district, you know, through a school-based model. And that's what we're talking to Suffolk University about right now, is literally that thing that we're doing right now, just so you know. It's not just training. We said we don't wanna pay for training. So people just should come and do that and leave. We're talking that a three- to five-year approach. So people just should come and do that in league. We're talking that a three- to five-year approach to systematically implement restored justice at the district-wide level. So it includes, like, year one of getting what we call early adopters to really believe in this, then a tier-one training on just, you know, that, that basic foundational work, and having a leadership development that would include school committee members, principals and superintendents and their cabinet to also adopt this way of thinking. And then in year three and four, all the schools roll it out. So we're looking at a systemic approach, because we know that if you just train people, but then there's not a center of gravity, there's not someone overseeing this implementation phase, and it's not in larger numbers, it's kind of things that one individual, I even had individuals who reached out to me and said, well, Millie, can I just do the training for my resume? I'm like, oh, God, you see, that's the point. I'm not gonna send people just to update their resume and make the resume more solid. If you don't have some, some leader behind you, you know, even if you start at one school at a time, that's also a model. But we, we're really looking at a systemic approach to this, because people leave, school committees change, leadership changes, medical staff changes, so it has to be adopted by the whole school. Any other questions? Yes?
Under the thought of being bold and bolder, do you collaborate with any other states that have similar programs that maybe we have some best practices? And you can share some of the names that you're doing?
Yeah, so I actually, I, I do meet every single month with Connecticut and New York. So we have this organization called the National Coalition of School Diversity out of Washington DC, and they have a national agenda for school integration. We're looking at federal bills, federal funding, federal laws to really ensure that we're looking at integration as a whole. And I mean, with Connecticut and New York are the only other two in the Northeast that are doing this work. So I do meet with them, but not to brag, but we are doing a little bit better than those other communities because of the way that they're run. So in Connecticut and in New York, it's run through their school department. So basically, it's that, that school district is the one that just has one extra program, and you can either come to our district or you can just go to one of the integration schools. So there's no medical staff, there's no nonprofit. So, you know, I think that's the part that I love about the world that I have in this, is because we are a separate entity. And Metco was incorporated back in the 60s by all the suburban and urban people together. We have, we can say the word bold and bolder, we can say this, say this, be a terrorist, who's gonna, you can mad at me, get mad at me. But, you know, I don't, and you don't have to sign my contract, you know? So I think that's, that's a model that actually works, because you have another entity that's convening all of us in one direction. That's being the middleman, that's being the one that's giving you that courage to, like, I'm gonna stand behind you in this work. But in the other communities, that's how it is. And in Connecticut, it's part of their magnet school system. So because they have a ton of magnet schools, they're doing integration via that way through their whole state department. In New York, it's called the Urban Suburban Program, and it's run by superintendents. So they, so the whole, that whole thing, they have an advisory council of just superintendents, and they figure out their own system. And who they place and who they don't place. The other day, they were even considering taking away the bus. So like, they don't have that infrastructure that we have, they don't have the center line item with this millions of dollars. You know, they don't have all these legislators behind it, community folks behind it, medical staff behind it, and a nonprofit board. So we're a little bit unique in that way. And some of them are not voluntary, as well, some of them are just part of their state law, but they're mandated to do this, while the medical program is a voluntary school integration program. So that nobody's making anybody be part of this. But because of our, our state, there's some mandate there that they're fulfilling. And now that we're doing this blueprint of Metro, that we're gonna be doing this blueprint of Metro, like a book of best practice across our community, and that continual practice will be the only ones really having documented paperwork to do this kind of work. People have been doing this since the 60s, it's kind of just been running on its own and taking its own form, but it hasn't really had a whole center of gravity. And the ones that I'm talking to, and then in Milwaukee, they have one there, and they're closing down, they're phasing the program out. And New Jersey has a legal lawsuit around integration, and they're in the community, took, put a lawsuit to make it happen, and it's still in litigation. So we're, you know, that's what we used to go to the medical law, and they did all this so beautifully, because it really talks about all this, like, when Judge Garrett made, you know, said that Boston Schools was intimated, and it was like a forced decision. Everybody received it with throwing rocks and police escort. And if you see that wall at HQ, literally said, meanwhile, while all of this was happening in Boston, for eight years, that medical program continued to run, because it was a program that was embracing that it was running. So we, like, didn't even experience what was happening in Boston in this same community at the same time. So I think there's a value, because we're voluntary. So everybody, you have to, you know, agree that you want to continue doing this work. So that means we have more passion, more autonomy, more desire to continue to do it. Any other questions?
One more.
Yeah, sure.
Would you consider putting together, like, a yearbook of all of the medical reps that have ever served? Because I remember in effort, we had, this is our girl Parker, um, that was a great issue, it was amazing. And I, I guess I'm suggesting that as never forget, these are the people who have been here, have done wonderful things.
Yes, so right now, we actually are doing a medical documentary, so this is all great questions, and we're working on all of these things. And we're actually interviewing the people from the past that we can find, and actually gather testimonials, some video, and put together, you know, a show for that. And because we just turned 57 years old, we actually want to see how quickly we, we're 90% done with a new video for Metro. And we want to reveal, like, and have a film series with a cocktail reception to celebrate our birthday, then kind of show everybody whose footage that we haven't yet seen. So we're working on that right now. But yes, if you have someone that has any contact for us from the past, urban or suburban, that can talk about the impact of the medical program, we're physically doing recordings right now at headquarters. And we're trying to grab all of these testimonials before we lose people. I don't know if you know about Mel King, if all of you guys know and have heard of him. He was the founder.
No, I didn't know that.
He was the founder of the medical program. So when you find our articles of incorporation, when we became a nonprofit, Mel King's name was right there. His daughter was the first graduate from Brooklyn Public Schools. She was in the first class in 1966. So he was a big-time civil rights thinker that really changed Boston. And, you know, so we have, like, I always said, I wish I would have recorded him, but when I got into the job, it was a really fair mistake. So I'm really trying to really be cognizant of that and not let anybody else pass away.
Get his daughter.
Yeah, you know, his daughter was at our office last, this past weekend. We did an alumni meeting, Mingle. So we have all these little new things that we're trying to do with my small staff, but we did a alumni meeting, but she showed up in the same, for her father's passing. And I was like, Pamela, what are you doing here? We all gave her a Pamela King, and she said, I just needed to get away, and I thought that being here with my other alumni at Metro would make me feel better. And she came. Yeah, so send her a name, you're willing to interview them.
Sarah, is she the question? Yeah, okay.
Be sure, Sarah, because I kind of saw you. I wanted to get that question from you, if you had it, no? Oh, okay.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. I can hear you're a little emotional.
Do you have another stuff tonight?
Well, no, the other stuff is supervising my two teenage daughters that are at home, asking when I'm gonna get home. Okay, you can understand what that means, right? What time you coming home, mommy? What about dad? Where is he? So he's at Boston Public Schools that I'm meeting right now, because he's a principal here in Boston, and then I'm here, and they're all counting to see when I'm heading home. Since I don't know who's overlying the house.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much, Millie. And we'll, we'll definitely be in touch. I, I definitely would love to do something like full-scale community, do a Metco 101 specifically for Concord. If we can get that, you know, going, whether it's on Zoom, yeah, great.
You guys, as you know, I'm gonna ask my usual, if we can try to get a picture. Or is that too much to ask? Or is that too much destruction?
She doesn't go anywhere with that.
I know.
I got to just say, like, stay right here.
Yeah, why don't you sit there? All right, let's do it.
But don't move from there, we just go right behind you. Go right behind and just take that quick shot. Can you get us? You got it, group?
You might have to stand on a chair.
Oh, that's perfect. Is that, is that new wide-angle lens, the iPhone? All right, you gotta move a little closer. Get a little closer. All right. One, two, three. Take a couple. Perfect.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, audience, for waiting for us. Make sure that we all make a request.
All right, we're gonna continue with our meeting, just because we are on a strict time schedule over here. So, you know, I wanted to pressure Millie to stay for this part, but, you know. You have, you know, we're totally fine.
I'm waiting for my husband to give me a penny. I'm just relying to my teacher, my teenager.
So our two medical directors, Deb Jefferson and Felicia Paisley, are with us to give us their presentation. Have some of us, I think Sharon and I, and Lori, and Kristen, Sawis and Andrew, CEID Strategic Steering Committee. And it is awesome. So this is well worth it. I don't think we've ever seen, well, we've seen similar things, but just to really see the work that's gone on over the past year, just in one spot, is super powerful for me. So I think you guys will enjoy.
Thank you for that. My name is Felicia Paisley. I am the medical director for Concord Public Schools.
I'm Deborah Gibson. I'm the medical director for Concord College, regional high school.
Millie was able to provide us the historic background, some of the more macro things. So Deb and I just kind of looked at some of the things that we're doing in the district, and try not to take as much time. So try to keep it short and sweet. So here are a bunch of the affiliations that Deb and I are both involved with, some of the work that we're doing in district, as well as with Millie and the medical staff. One thing, and obviously I won't review that, but one thing that I wanted to point out is our restorative justice committees and practices. Today, Deb and I both attended some talks about that, with, with medical aims and how to incorporate that district-wide. And I was able to write that Concord has already started that work, thinking about that. How we're gonna implement this sort of practice.
Well, um, part of the medical directors association, we're all, we try to infiltrate ourselves in different ones, so we can get the whole feel for all the different affiliations and involvements that are, that we're involved with. I'm also on the medical justice funding guidance committee in the cultural competence steering committee for the district. So we try to get ourselves in each one, so.
All right, so we're kind of, kind of gonna go through this, passing it off to each other, because the, the two sides of it do look a little bit different. We have a K to A, except having the high school side. So currently, my staffing model, obviously me as the director, I have three full-time staff members that work under me, two academic liaisons, and one tutor bus monitor. We also have a parent, parent elected school committee representative, Aisha. So I think that we might have committed Aisha, and I've realized that she's here. The news is, is here as well.
Yes, I did miss them, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm bored.
Sure. So we also, right now, have 73 students on the K to A side, 47 elementary, 26. And we are in all three elementary schools and middle schools.
At the high school, it's myself, two full-time staff, I have an adjustment counselor, and an academic liaison, our parent-elect person is Domingo. And we have 49 medical students at the high school. The tutor bus monitor staff roles, you want to talk a little bit about that? Because we have a bus, but I, we don't have a monitor on the bus. At times, they could be put on a bus, but at this time, it's, the high school students are acting adult-like, so that's a good thing.
Um, so yes, so on the CPS side, I have tutors who are supporting classrooms. They hold students for small groups, as well as the academic liaisons. And there's overall support for, in this particular case, Alcott, and they are also our primary bus monitors. Right now, I have one, but she's our primary bus monitor on that side.
The adjustment counselor is at the high school, and what me and Felicia also did is have her go and inundate herself into the middle schools for the rising eighth graders that are getting ready to come up to the middle school. She does some individual counseling. She runs groups at our, at the high school. So this has been going on since the end of September for the adjustment counselor. And the academic liaison, we both have one at the high school, and I think they're looking for one. But there, my academic liaison is in all the classrooms, and most of them, I was academic liaison. So I was in a lot of classes. I worked with the teachers, the parents, to try to make sure that medical students are well taken care of.
So yes, so we have a few open positions that we will fill as soon as possible. But on the, you can go for it. On the academic overview, really had a nuts and bolts of it. Right now, currently on my elementary school side, we have, the majority of our students are on benchmark, which is another way of staying on grade level when it comes to their ELA reading and writing. We have about 40% of our students receiving RTI support, which is response to intervention. It's a very methodical way of making sure that students receive the support that they need. And we have 38% who are already enrolled in special education services. Really, really excited to say that in our second trimester just now that passed, we have 62% of our students in the middle school side are on-rolled students, one of which is a straight-A student, maybe call it the principal list. In that, within that, we have 83% of our students in our sixth-grade class, which means we are veteran in core classes, 55 in seventh grade, 63 in eighth grade. We have about 54 of our students require additional supports from our academic liaison, Chris Skinner over at the, at the middle school. And about 50% of our students are enrolled in RTI supports, and 46% are receiving special ed services.
At the high school level, the adjustment counselor has been doing weekly, y'all can't hear me, I know, I'm loud too, because I don't like nobody. The adjustment counselor at the high school does lunch groups, as I said before, and, and it's been happening since October. We also have, we get a lot of information from medical, so three of our high school students went through the, from January to March, the SAT prep that Millie was talking about before. It was weekly online. And then we have 12 high schoolers that'll be graduating this year from CCHS. And decided some of the colleges, they want to go to, some are going on something to us. So by May first, they're supposed to decide where they want to go. We also have, and I didn't have it on here, but we have three of our students moving up to honors chemistry, two of them are moving up to honors chemistry, and one is moving up into enriched chemistry. So we try to integrate with the, I guess the department is, that's what they are, to try to make sure that we're getting medical students in some of these other classes also.
Right, so, you know, one of, like, Millie mentioned, one of the major reasons I'm out here, not leave with the academic side, but also making sure that our students are engaged in, in everything that Concord has to offer. So right now, our students at the elementary school level are participating in most of the PTG ran events, multicultural night and math night just passed, and we had representation in both of those events. Our family friends program is something I can speak about really quickly, is, you know, something that we're revamping, but it gives our students the opportunity to partner with Concord families and Concord peers and have playdates or, or go on, um, different activities, different events. Tomorrow, they're actually going to a trampoline park, which kind of makes me nervous, but. Tomorrow, they're actually going to a trampoline park, which kind of makes me nervous, but. Just being able to incorporate, you know, the students working together and having recreational time together. Right now, the majority of our students are at Alcott, and I think, as we interview myself, we get at least two or three emails weekly asking how people can be involved in the family program around the district, so that's very promising, and we're working on ways to kind of incorporate their wishes and desires to be part of that go into what we're doing with family friends. Well, before I move to the next slide, tenacity, that's another thing that I just want to bring up. That was an academic challenge that our middle schoolers did a couple of weeks back. They were in competition with several MECO districts. It was invitational that had Black and Latino students come and compete across, you know, science was one of them, I think, ELA was another. And leadership was one of the categories, and, you know, our team put in, put in their all, put in their best, haven't seen it, experienced it. The competitive edge of me is coming out, so we'll have plans for next year and how we're going to prep for that. But that was just a really good opportunity for our students to be around other districts and other students of color and compete in something other than sports.
One thing about it, they might have tried their best, but Concord had the title when I was in the middle school for four years straight, so. So, this is a lot of what we're doing in student engagement at the high school. A lot of our students, a year ago, voiced their opinion around things that they needed and things that they needed to be done at the high school. And so, what I try to do is listen to that voice, and I don't want, we're not going through all of this, you know, but the fall and winter sports, we have the bus on Saturdays, we have during the break of vacations. They wanted someone to come in and help them far as college, so we, I have someone volunteering a college essays, working with them at any time that the student is available to work. If it's ten o'clock at night, sure, help them at ten o'clock at night. The Rotary Leadership Award is, three of our, I think, sophomores are going to Pittsburgh State for three days to learn leadership skills. And you don't have to have A's and B's, you just have to have a motivation. So, you know, I named five, but I got three, so they're going this year, so that's going to be happening. We were part of the showcase. We brought in like three MECO students that talked to families, and they were the ones that gave the voice around Concord Carlisle, because two of them have been in Concord since kindergarten and one since they're straight. So, other than that, the MECO space is working out. Yes, the MECO space is working out, and they're going to be painting it this coming week. I brought some little swatches, so they can pick the colors they want, and then we're going to get to about seniors to draw murals in that space.
Just, just a quick overview of transportation. So, on the CPS side, there are two elementary school buses. I thought it was important to split the city, so that more people have access to their bus stops quickly. We also have a middle school bus, there's only one bus on that side. They have about six stops, again, you know, kind of spans the city so that they can get to their bus stops as quickly as possible. No, no worries. Right now, our elementary school buses, and this is, that's what, I can just speak on it really quickly. Elementary school buses are monitored, unless there's a major emergency, but those don't happen very often at all. But there's a morning and afternoon monitor on both buses at the CMS side. Currently, we are still searching for bus monitor, but those buses are covered in our afternoon runs. Kids are actually awakened up and have a lot to say about their school days. They usually sleep on the mornings, on the morning commute, so that makes it a little bit easier for middle school age. And we also provide a late bus, a four-thirty late bus that students have access to. One last thing about the elementary school, my chest plate over here reminds me, we give our elementary school students access to the middle school bus on communes so that they can be there before school activities, my chest plate.
And at the high.
Sorry.
At the high school, we have two buses, one that does six stops in the AM, and the second bus does ten stops in the AM. There's one bus in the afternoon that covers fifteen stops in the PM. A lot of our students are at sports and after school activities in clubs. We also have students that can get on the four-fifteen bus, that's the middle school bus, if they just want to stay after or teacher or something like that.
Sorry, my computer's getting a little finicky after all the Zoom. So, it wants us to see the pictures instead of your texts, and I'm not sure why, but. Yeah, it's pulling a picture up instead of.
So, here's just a quick, I want to say brain dump of things that I'm looking forward to getting rolling either the end of this year or, you know, kind of trickling into next year. Having this be here, one, I came in really, really lofty goals that I needed to slow down just a little bit. You're able to do many things, but these are some of the things that I want to get in place for next year. Right now, we are currently in our enrollment process. We opened that up kindergarten to fifth grade, and we still also have a sibling preference, so if there are siblings in other grades that have applied or are in our school now, and they have a sibling in other grades, their parents can apply and have them come to Concord if we have space. But right now, our recruitment process includes K to eight, and we have a good handful of new families starting next year. One thing that, you know, as the school year went along, we realized that was really important, was to connect our PTGs. We have a MECO PTG who is working really, really hard to help, you know, students and families feel part of Concord and the community and supporting them through, you know, how to do that and how to navigate the system. We also have school-based PTGs, and it just makes sense for them to be able to work together. One thing that I won't go down to the rest that I'm really, really excited about is, starting this summer with our new families coming in, we are going to pair them with a veteran MECO family, as well as a Concord family, so that they have resources on both sides to help support their transition into the new school district.
Well, my turn. One thing that I'm doing, you know, around the HBCUs is working with the Guidance Department to get more resident Concord and Carlisle students. A lot of times, they're forgotten, and they have some, and they think everything is for MECO, MECO. But, you know, I try to engulf everybody in the process, keeping my students first, but at the same time, when I see them working hard and doing things, I think it's just as important to, in talking to the Guidance Head, we're going to be meeting together to see what we can do far as bringing other things in to help Concord and Carlisle students. We have a strong MECO ambassador relationship with the administration. I have two leaders from each grade that bring their concerns or anything happening in school to the administration, and we discuss it and talk about it. With this year, far as Black History Month, we had it on the TVs inside of the Common Center. I forget, I don't know what they go, but we also had teachers that had different things running in their classrooms. The Science Department put up a complete barrage of all the Black scientists and different people that made a difference in a lot of lives, which were the majority in the world these days, was Black people that founded a lot of things and did a lot of things. So, we're just looking to try to continue to work on, you know, academics, keep raising the bar for that, because sometimes, you know, if the students get there too early and can't meet with their teachers, I have tutors that are set up, whatever it takes to give them what they need, I'm outreaching, I send it to them, I send it to their parents, so they'll know that we're really trying to do things to make sure that they can lift the bar for themselves.
Any questions?
Carrie, I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much. This thing's really helpful, and thanks for everything you can do. I was particularly blown away by the student engagement slide for both K to eight and also the high school. It's, I didn't know a lot about that, I didn't know a lot about those activities, and that's really exciting, so thanks for sharing that. I had a couple of questions. One was on the, on the K through five in particular, ELAs for. I'm wondering how many of the students in, in fifth grade in particular, how many started in kindergarten? Have there, have there, have all of those students been with us since kindergarten, or the vast majority, or how, what does that look like?
That is a very good question. I don't have a direct, an exact answer for you, but no, not all of those students have started in kindergarten. Some would come in and go off like sibling preferences, like the third grade level, so it's kind of, it's a little bit of a mixed bag.
Okay, because it looks like, it looks like kids are starting off like really strong in first grade, and then numbers were going down, and I wanted to, I was just trying to understand. We talked about that in our meeting too, right?
Yes, so we also need to take into consideration class size, so right now, current fifth graders, I want to say I have five. So, it's looking in the, in, you know, scope of the K five program, but there's really just five.
So, that outlier number is.
It feels a little bit.
Okay, that makes sense. My, my other question is, when you were talking about recruitment for next year, I was wondering if you could expand on that a little bit? We've talked about the, or Dr. Hunter has said that she's looking to the ambitious goal of ten students per grade K to five. Can you just speak to where you are with that, and is there, are there ways that the school committee, the community, and others can help in that?
Yeah, sure. We are actually in a really good position. I had an enrollment meeting today. So, for the most part, like right now, I'm still, I think I might, I want to say I have like five kindergarten spaces open to bring us to, actually, we shot for twelve kindergartners, and I want to say in fourth grade, I have one, second grade, I have one seat open. So, we're filling up very, very quickly, and I think to Millie's point, if she's still here, but being able to choose your district or, you know, list three districts, it's made a major difference. I'm a Lexington alum, so it is a little weird to go out and recruit for Concord. At the same time, I understand now, but it, we have been able to pull families, and the showcase that we did a couple of months ago was huge, with a lot of families coming over to the table and just inquiring about what's going on at Concord and kind of being really curious about some of the engagement and after the story that we're pushing out.
The Family and Friends Program, you said that you get a lot of inquiries about that. I feel like this is a great opportunity to just kind of share what people can do. If they're reaching out to you, what is that? What is your response to that? How can people get involved in that?
So, we are, and I'm saying we, myself and the elementary team are looking at ways to actually make that program function a lot better, a lot smoother, so we're thinking of revamping it going into next year. There are several families around the Concord community who have reached out, like how can we be involved? I have a student at Thoreau who, you know, doesn't have any MECO students in their class, but, you know, how can we be a part of this? And I had a way to reach out, and like, you know, my kid will be in kindergarten in two years, but I want to be a part of this. So, there are a lot of people, you know, in the community who are looking just to support and be there. So, I don't really have an exact answer for you right now. I know one of my major goals is to make sure that every MECO family has an identified Concord family that they can connect with, rely on, and just help them navigate, so that is, that is step one. We're getting together with the PTGs, because they're heavily involved as well, and just kind of making sure that representation is there. And PTG, we're able to kind of speak on what we need, and then also kind of figure out ways to pull in all of these supporters and not like push them away. It's kind of hard if you don't have a kid in school to make you a family friend in a traditional sense, but that doesn't mean that you can't support the programs.
Yeah, 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 thank you. I, I think my last commentary, that Deb, Deb, something that Deb said was just whatever it takes to get them what they need. I just feel like that really gave you through in this presentation, so thank you for everything. Support, support you.
Any other questions first?
Yep, Sarah.
Are we, it's, we're following up on Carrie's. Are we also recruiting at the high school right now, or where?
So, we're recruiting for Concord, which means, you know, they, the cohorts will move through the high school. The older you get, kind of the trickier the transition is, especially when you get to the high school age. We're very close to graduation, so the need to kind of fill whatever gaps need to be filled to make sure students are on grade level. Those efforts sometimes are beyond what we can do in those four-year spans, so we try to steer away from having students, you know, above fifth grade coming in. But again, on a case-by-case sibling preference basis, it could possibly happen.
Thank you so much. This was excellent, and my second time around, just as opposed to my first time around, I really appreciate all the work. No, that was great, and we are going to actually open up public comment again, because public comment was supposed to be after the presentations, but I'll just remind anyone, if you'd like to make a public comment, we cannot be engaging back and forths. And so, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can just cloud up, and if not, we'll live up. All right, if you can state your name and address for the minutes, that would be great, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Akia Obas, MECO parent at Concord, see my little one right there, and also a MECO alum, I went to the foot line. So, again, thank you to the MECO staff, awesome presentation. Two of my comments is really around transparency. One, it would be great to get transparency around how the MECO budget is spent, and how as a parent, we can advocate for certain resources. One that comes to mind is a social worker dedicated to the MECO students at the kindergarten and middle school level. You know, being a MECO student is a very unique opportunity as a, as a student. I think a resource like that could be very helpful, as well as resources around how can we coordinate after-school activities a little bit more strategically and streamlined, where we are making the best use out of our transportation budget. I understand that's a big portion of the budget, and I could only imagine how complicated it is. And so, looking, you know, to understand how as an MECO parent, we can partner on how some of those decisions are made. The other comment I have was regarding the survey that drove the results to the 2022 youth risk behavior that we shared at the last meeting. Really just trying to understand how that survey was structured, and how do we ensure there were any, not any implicit biases in terms of how that survey was structured? I was expecting to see a lot more results centered around the MECO students, or I should say, people of color in Concord, in Concord. And so, looking to understand sample size of that survey, when the survey was taken, how is the survey structured for students of color, and how could we potentially be incorporating biases in that that could be impacting the results? Assuming that those results are actionable to the, to the community, right, from a resource, how resources are spent, what investments are made, and we want to make sure that we're making those decisions off of good data. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Erin Pike, 174 Hill Street, Concord. Thank you very much for this presentation. It's fantastic to see us talking about MECO and celebrating all the amazing things that we're doing, and I loved Millie's suggestion of bringing sort of MECO 101 to the wider community. Because I think to a lot of the questions here, we've talked about it for a lot of years, but coming from Thoreau, we didn't really talk about it in elementary school. My kid got to middle school, and we had talked about it personally, but her friends have all these sort of assumptions that they had made, that then the rumors got spread around, and, you know, sort of attacking that from a community angle, I think is a great idea. I also would echo Akia's questions about the budget too, because I think there's a distinction between sort of the MECO budget and the DEI work that we do, and how I'm curious to know sort of. to know sort of whether those two budgets are combined or how we separate out the needs of the Mecca students versus the work, the great work that we're doing, DEI focused that obviously supports Mecca students, but also supports all of Concord and Concord Carlisle students. And understanding sort of where we can support, sort of increasing what budgets we need to support and to address both Mecca student concerns and our continuing work with DEI. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And anyone online? Did you just raise hand feature? Yes.
Oh, I think, oh. Hi, yes, I'm, I'm good now?
Yes.
It's loud. Um, yes, I'm Elizabeth Frank, 1283. Sorry, is there...
Yeah, it's our hybrid issue here.
I think somebody has to mute themselves and only one person being muted, I think. It's because the owl is on.
We have an echo. I, I really apologize. If you'd like to email your comments, you can just email the Concord Carlisle School Committee and we will certainly look at your comments and we...
It sounds good. Or is it better now? No, I'm muted. It's not better.
You can go, Elizabeth.
She is.
I'm good. It's, it's better now. Okay. See if I remember what I was saying. I wanted to thank you all for this presentation. It was really informative. Really appreciate the focus on Mecca and especially the work that Felicia and Deb were doing to support the students. And I just wanted to, I guess, say two things. One is that I'm just such a big supporter of Mecca and I'm so glad that our district has it. And I would love to see us really champion and celebrate this program, have it be something that we pay a lot of attention to and really focus on. And especially the idea that it's not just to benefit the Mecca students, but it's to benefit the Concord students as well, to enrich all of our experience, everyone's experiences. And to that end, just to put this out there, I would love to see all the elementary schools getting to participate in Mecca. I realize there are probably considerations and budgets and things to, to go on with that, but I did, my daughter participated in the Mecca program as a buddy in Thoreau and I know now that, that it's been consolidated to Alcott. So that's just a suggestion to put out there, but thank you all so much for your time.
A policy committee of the whole. We had a smaller group this time, but we were able to efficiently get through a whole host of policies. We focused on finishing the K and L community relations and education agency relations policies, and then we did a couple of housekeeping things. I'm gonna run through them and then we can open it up to discussion on any of them. So I emailed most of this out, so hopefully folks have had a chance to take a look at it. Okay, so the first policy is EBCS, which was a interim policy on COVID-related issues. These policies were meant to be temporary policies to respond to the COVID pandemic. Next month, both the federal public health emergency and the state public health emergency will be lifted. So we brought this to the committee just to talk about whether or not we think these, this policy is necessary or whether or not we can prove that in the recommendation of the committee. Last week was to bring it to the full committee, recommend that we... The second policy is CPI, which is evaluation of the superintendent. Last spring, we determined that we would evaluate the superintendent every other year. So we intended to review this policy simply to just update it, to note that. However, in looking at it, we realized that the MASC version is much cleaner, much more thorough and is, is just a better policy. So it's, and it also, when we talk about timing, it says that it would be mutually agreed upon time versus indicating in the policy that it would be annually or every other year or whatnot. So our recommendation coming out of the meeting was that we bring this to a first grade and recommend to the committee that we adopt the new M, the new MASC version. Moving on to the K policies. KLG was, is relations with police authorities. This policy outlines how we engage with the local police. There were no changes between our version and the MASC recommended version, so we mark this as reviewed within due date. KLK is relations with local government authorities. Oh, KLJ, I apologize. Relations with local government authorities. This policy outlines how the administration will work with planning boards and authorities as it pertains to schools. Again, there are no changes between our version and MASC's recommended version, so we recommended that we mark it as reviewed within due date. LA is the education agency relations. This policy sets a goal or expectation that the school committee will engage with and work with other education groups and institutions, noting that, quote, "much as needed through cooperative endeavors with other agencies." Same thing, there are no changes between our current version and the MASC version, so we recommend that we adopt or mark it as reviewed within due date. LB is relations with the other schools and school districts. The purpose of this policy is to outline how and why the schools might cooperate with other schools or agencies to meet the needs of our students. An example here is how Concord and Concord Carlisle work with Case Collaborative. Here again, there are no changes and we recommend that we mark it as reviewed within due date. LBC, relations with non-public schools. The purpose of this policy is to outline a process by which the, the school committee and the administration will follow when engaging with a potential new private school that hopes to open in Concord or Carlisle. We have a very outdated and vague version of this policy currently. In fact, Dr. Hunter was talking about her experience using it and how it was very chaotic trying to put the pieces together. The new version that MASC recommends offers kind of a roadmap that we would follow as well this whole committee and administration to, to go through that process. I don't want to speak for you, Dr. Hunter, but you did, it seems like a good, a new, a good...
Yes, much clearer, cleaner.
Yes.
Specific.
So unlikely occurrence, but if it, if it comes up, it would be a good change.
But it did.
Yeah. So we recommend that we adopt the new MASC version. And the last one is student teaching and internships. So this is another policy in which there are no differences between our policy and the MASC policy. The purpose of it is to, it kind of outlines our commitment to student teachers and interns. And it states that an initial arrangement with colleges and universities must first be approved by our committee. We discussed this as a group at the policy meeting last week and were kind of uncertain as to why this is something that needed to come through the committee. I followed up with Dorance Presser. I sent this along to all of you, but she said that in some instances, there are financial arrangements involved, so that is why it would go through the school committee. I don't, I think this is where we might discuss what, what we want to do with that. But yeah, so we, that is the only really big discussion. We can talk about any of these policies, but that's the one thing I do think we should kind of talk about on how we want to move that policy forward. That's the... Great. Any discussion about any of these policies?
Carrie, I wonder if you could go back to KLJ, KLK?
Yeah.
Not sure you spoke to both of them. I think you did, you spell out planning authorities. Is that like the planning board or what are other examples?
So we talked about this, planning authorities, and then I think it says, it is planning boards and then any other authorities that have. I think it just tries to be broad for the purposes of anyone that's doing planning.
We've talked about maybe it also is in terms of anybody planning things that may impact school, but usage, right? Like town meeting and...
Having it on a broad...
Facilities or...
It gets very broad, very fast.
Yes.
It read like it was intentional, like that was...
Yeah.
Good?
It read like it was intentionally broad.
We read that it was intentionally broad. Anyone who may have been in authority position who plans things that may somehow relate or impact school operations.
So I guess just a rhetorical question. Do we, by virtue of its broad nature, do we set, set ourselves and these other groups up for noncompliance? And, and not, not willful?
Yeah.
Because difficult. When I say it's just more, I'm not sure there's much we can do about it.
I think we talked about, let's just stick with the MASC version. I think that's kind of where we landed on it.
Again, I think, I think, because it says the superintendent will keep the school committee informed of planning matters. So, so, you know, I think that allows us the flexibility. Again, I think the town meeting was the best example that we came up with. Sarah just mentioned, you know, ensuring that major events are not in conflict. I don't think it's about minutia.
Thanks very much operational.
Well, that's what it says. The superintendent will keep the school committee informed. So I don't think...
What about our capital planning with the town? Where would that fit with this? Because that seems to be an area of emphasis in Concord town.
Word functions made me think this was more practical and event-specific than high-level planning like that, physical facility or otherwise. I felt like this is really event-based for the most part.
Thank you.
Of course, to your point, I think I may have missed KLK.
Yes, you actually missed KLJ.
With relation to local government, I just want to say it.
Yes.
But you did KLK. You skipped KLJ.
Oh, okay.
They both sound very governmental.
Any other questions on our first read?
And our revisit will be next week.
Yes, will not be tomorrow, their next meeting will be next...
Very good, thank you.
Well, not next week, yeah, for after vacation. Next meetings. And does anybody have any comments or thoughts on student teaching internships? Yeah.
Well, I, well, didn't Sarah point out that obviously it had been, I think it was you or me, that it had been written? So there is an established list. There wouldn't be unless anything changed dramatically, we would be in compliance therein, right? So the MASC served as, the versions served as well and should be not.
Yeah. Which makes sense. So do we, so then are we recommending adopting the MASC version?
Well, they, they just reviewed it in 2022, right?
Yeah, it was very...
Did they being MASC?
MASC, yes.
Question for the superintendent.
Yeah, 2022, and ours is the same. So the question was just, so it's not actually changing our policy? It's...
Just saying.
It would be redating.
We reviewed it.
Do you feel comfortable with that?
Question, LBA. This is a general endorsement of our institutions as a student teacher opportunity. Is it organic and also be a more strategic recruiting tool for us? Does it work that way in practice? If so, could we do more of it? Should we do more of it?
Sure, we're actively in those conversations, especially as we look at diverse hiring. I used some opportunities with UMass Lowell this year that came up with the chancellor, new chancellor came in and reached out very specifically to, to public schools. So yes, I think there's, there's both there.
Thank you.
All right, so consider that a first read and our second read will be our next meeting of the past week. We have no action items here, so at this point, I would adjourn the Concord Carlisle School Committee and Concord School Committee to stay in session. So for Carlisle members, thank you. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, you can also leave. Really empty.
Okay, Concord, we're still on. In light of the fact that we are going to look at how we approve quarterly transfers, if we have them at cost centers, I'm gonna recommend we table in light of time, because we have probably 15 minutes at the most before our time here expires, that we would table our discussion item on the budget. We'll put that at next week's meeting, like we're gonna do for the region.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Next meeting, next week. So I'm gonna recommend that we move that to the April 25 budget, agenda, and I would instead recommend that we move on to our action item. If everyone's comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay, so in light of that, do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding the seventh grade ELA instruction? And would, well, actually, before we do that, would you guys be so kind, Kristen or Lori, to talk quickly about that?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Kristen if we can consider the motion. Just a quick description of the process on the challenge.
Yep, yep. So we enacted a policy and a policy for curriculum opt-out, so, and challenges. So a parent of the seventh grader challenged the reading of the book. And so the process that was set up was to have the committee read about it, decide if it was still in line with the Massachusetts ELA curriculum standards, which was the statement of intent from the National Councils of Teachers of English to teach more diverse literature, which was, and to continue. So our recommendation to the superintendent and therefore to you is that we continue to have Ivy Aberdeen read as a seventh grade English book. The unit takes about four, four weeks with some activities in there for free.
Yeah, and just one point of clarity, you didn't put a new policy in. You took out one of the old ones, which made this the active policy for how questions of library and curriculum are handled. Otherwise, I think that's a summary for you and certainly my recommendation is aligned with that process that Ivy would remain in the seventh grade curriculum.
So if everyone feels that that overview is sufficient, I would now entertain a motion on this.
To the Congress, maintain the book, Ivy Aberdeen, in the seventh grade.
That's second. Any discussion?
I know there are controversial topics probably for our students. We don't seek out controversy, we don't say any controversy, but we know that controversial subjects do, do occur and what might be controversial to me might not be controversial to my friend. I think it's well and good that these books be brought to students in the context of early sound educational setting. And that's, that's what we're doing. I'm sure others have looked at legal opinions as well, as well as the recommendations here. I think the committee has done the appropriate thing here as has the superintendent.
I agree. Well saved, Court.
Thank you. Right, so if there's no other discussion, I would, all in favor of Court's motion?
Hi.
Hi. Well, with that, we can adjourn the Concord School Committee. Thank you guys all for coming. We're so happy to have been here.
Yes, thank you.
The Concord Center's hospitality.
Yes.
And we'll see you after.
Really nice to...
Oh, no, we'll see my...